I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go on to number two, open public forum. Anybody that's not on the agenda that wishes to speak? Otherwise, we'll move on to number three, approval of the amended agenda. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. This is Gary.
Gary makes a motion. Shannon seconds it? Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, oh, we got to do roll call. Shannon?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda, recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Doug makes a motion. How about a second?
This is Jamie. I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Number five, resolution 2020-34, resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Maple Ridge First Edition Plat, number one. Right there.
It should be flipped up. Yeah. Now state your name and...
My name is Dave Rogamer, number one, Cold Spring, and we petitioned the planning and council to create a plat from Maple Ridge, and just create a plat to make it easier to market and to sell.
Okay. I'll read the recommendation. To approve resolution 2020-34, resolution approving the preliminary and final plat known as Maple Ridge First Edition. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jamie makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second. This is Gary.
Gary seconds it. Any discussion on this? Planning had this the other night?
Planning had it about April.
April? Okay. And it looked good to you guys?
Yeah. The resolution, as you can tell, has some conditions set forth, one of which is the next agenda, an easement for future road and right-of-way. And it would allow anyone who purchased it to build using that right-of-way as their front yard setback instead of where 17 pens, so that they don't have to be right in the eastern corner of their lot. So I think those were the two. Oh, they had to also do private, they have to figure out whoever buys it, pay, figure out design and connect to water and sewer. And if they need a lift station, that's their lift station, that's private one, not the city one. So the resolution will be filed as soon as the plat is filed as well, so it'll be recorded against the...
All right. Is there any other discussion on this? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Number six, proposed easement in Maple Ridge First Edition number one. That was just what you just got done talking about.
Right. Instead of doing a dedicated road now and have some other requirements of that road, a right-of-way easement is there for future development to go west if we ever annex west of this development.
All right. Okay, I'll read the recommendation. To approve, accepting the easement for future road and improvements within Maple Ridge First Edition. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jamie makes a motion to approve. Doug, did you say?
Doug, I'll second it.
Doug seconds it. Any discussion on it?
May I have one?
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Bridget, are we guaranteeing that, you know, with that easement, that 10 years from now, there's no structures built on there? The only reason I'm saying that is because like up in Oak Heights and Blue Hearn Heights, some of those easements, we have buildings on them, you know, now 10 years from now, we put a road in there, you know, and just so we don't have to squabble with somebody about moving a building that's on there.
We'll have that for building permits. And when they buy it, they'll have the easement drawn, they'll get the document and probably wonder about it and hopefully come to us, but we'll, we'll put some documentation in some files to make sure everyone knows it's there.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Doesn't it become part of the abstract too, once the easement is recorded?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be in all the documentation anyone buys. So the first buyer will know for sure, the second one is on notice for that, so as future, it's perpetual.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion on it? Otherwise, me will vote. Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number seven, resolution 2020-35, resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Quick Trip, 1120. Dean George?
Yes, sir. Hi. Hi. So we're here getting our preliminary and final plat approved tonight so we can construct a new convenience store in town. And that's why we're here.
The one problem is, we were hoping you have the revised one and they don't have it yet, so I don't...
So we, our engineer, we're holding back on getting the final, final plat with revisions from Stearns County completed until we hear back from Minut and see if they want any right-of-way in that north property line. So we're not sure about that yet, because the property line on, will be the east side moved a little bit.
Well, I was hoping you'd be here with it, but since it's not, they would like to see, normally they see it, so maybe we need to table this till the next meeting then you can have it done.
When is the next meeting?
Till I 14th.
Okay.
Because they, they do need to see the final, final, because do you know how many feet south that entrance has to go?
Uh, it's more external located?
Yeah. It's probably almost down to fifth.
Yeah, it's probably 40 extra feet, maybe? But that won't be reflected on the plat, that's on the site plan.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Because that's only off of Stearns County, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right, because that's not on the site, that's not on the plat.
So the plat wasn't necessarily changed as a result of that.
Right. It might, for Minut though.
Are they going to require more right-of-way? We don't know. I think Stearns County did from the center of that line on 49, moves a little bit in the site.
Yeah, so you...
It's got to be revised for that comment.
Yeah, for that comment, so both comments need to be, I'm not sure that Minut's going to require anything else, because when I contacted them and gave them the letter, all they said was make sure they don't go into the storm sewer. And they didn't say anything more about right-of-way. So we may have to table this till we can see the Stearns, that west-east line change, right? They want more.
That's fine, I can be back at 14.
Yeah. Okay. Do we, we don't need a motion to table it, or do we?
Yeah, take a motion to table and...
Shannon makes a motion to table.
Till the 14th.
Table this recommendation until the next meeting? I need a second.
I'll second that.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on that? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries.
Sorry, guys, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number eight, resolution 2020-36, resolution approving or denying a variance request for six-foot fence within the front yard setback. Ashley Kurzman?
That's me.
Aye.
Hi, I'm Ashley Kurzman, 607 Emma Drive, and we are requesting to fence in our backyard, we're requesting to have a six-foot privacy fence within the 25-foot setback, setting it at 13 feet back from our property line. I was able, my neighbor wasn't able to come, but he did give me a letter of recommendation that he approves it. I don't know if you guys want to see it. Brent and Amy Gamrot, they're right to the north of us. And then I did take a picture of our backyard. It is a hill on that side, so if it were four feet, it doesn't really provide the safety and security that we would like for our four children.
Can I see that?
Yeah.
Is this... What street is this?
That's the cul-de-sac.
Is that, okay.
Cold Street that she lives on, Emma Drive.
Okay, okay.
Which is confusing.
So that's the street leading into the cul-de-sac, and there's four or five houses back there.
So we have Emma Drive, Drive Road, and Emma Drive cul-de-sac?
Well, it's Emma Drive with two cul-de-sacs that are called Emma Drive, and what's that third cul-de-sac called? Is that Emma Drive Two? Are they all Emma Drive?
I'm not sure on the, on this area that I took from Google, it says it's Fourth Avenue Southeast, but I don't know if it actually is.
The cul-de-sac, there's a cul-de-sac, so that's one single one?
This one says Fourth Street Southeast.
On the county, it says Emma and Emma. Well, I know the first one's Emma, because my sister lives there. Yeah.
To the north of us is the group home, kitty corner from our house, and then to the south of us, we have the trailer park back there as well. And then the paper behind that shows the letter from Brent and Amy Gamrot, moving right on our property line to the lot.
That could be six feet, it's just the one that's on the street they came, so...
Right, he was just showing that he has no problem with us building the fence where we would like it.
Okay, and trying to think, I was on, I was on planning for a few years, but I'm not on...
I was not at the meeting, unfortunately, so I did not get to discuss the hardship, if it qualified for hardship or not. So I'd like to maybe go over that.
And I wasn't there.
Right, so that's why I know that, I talked with the chair of the planning commission after the fact to discuss this one in particular, just to make sure that I was clear on it before I came here too.
Sure.
And he felt there, he felt clearly that there was no hardship. So and that was his opinion. So I know that he was very clear on denying that, but I do know that the other people on the planning commission did approve it.
Right, so you can run through the three-prong test and go through it as a group to figure out. Because it's reasonable, it's unique to the parcel and essential character. Obviously, it's a reasonable use, because we allow fences everywhere. A four-foot fence up to the property line, six-foot fence outside the property line. In essential character, it won't result in any change to essential character, so the main factor is, is what's unique about this particular parcel, inside the border of the parcel, that would require a variance. And I, I don't know if at the planning commission, they actually stated what the uniqueness was. We read it to it, and I couldn't find it. Gary, do you remember, recall what the unique factor was?
I don't recall what it was, but I guess being a council member on the planning commission, I've always tried to approach things from a practical matter, and after reading the Kurzman's information on why they were requesting it, I was one of the people that voted in favor of giving them the variance. And I would do the same tonight as well, if and when we come to a vote. I just think that if people have practical, reasonable reasons for requesting something that's outside of the ordinance, that we need to take that into consideration, and this is but for test, I've never felt much about that and believed in it, and just think we need to be practical and, if it makes sense, help our residents out. That's my two cents worth.
So I drove up to the property and looked at it. I can, I understand the hill issue you're talking about, a four-foot fence isn't going to do any good. Well, it's going to do good. I'm in favor of you putting a six-foot fence up, only because even if you come out of the cul-de-sac, there's plenty of land of sight, so when I looked at the three things we're talking about, unique, I would say the hill that you have coming down to the road and going up is rather unique. I have a corner lot, so I understand your predicament.
Yeah.
I have a smaller lot than you, so if I had to put a six-foot high fence 25 feet back, I would have a third of my yard gone, so I understand the practical application like Gary said, so I'm in favor of allowing this variance to go through.
So you're saying that the uniqueness would be the hill?
So, yeah, I need, I need, in fact, I need something to write in the ordinance.
I would say the uniqueness of this is the hill, because a four-foot fence doesn't allow any privacy at the 13-foot setback. I mean, you stand on the yard and you can, you know, so I would say that the hill that goes down to Emma Drive, which seems kind of odd considering it's Emma Drive, both your front yards.
That picture is the one, that's the, that's the side that you're going to put that six-foot fence up?
Yep, that's the cul-de-sac.
With that, with that slope.
So there's, so there's an elevation in the yard that goes up, you know, whereas it would, it kind of defeats the purpose of a four-foot fence if you're sloping up two and a half feet.
Bridget, I'm having a tough time hearing Jamie or whoever's talking.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was me. I'll speak back.
This is Gary, and it's not Jamie's fault, but I have not understood one word he said.
No, you were a little far away from the microphone, so I'll repeat that.
So I actually drove up, I looked at her property, I have definitely a first look view of what the hill she's talking about, and a four-foot fence wouldn't really do a whole lot of good in terms of the lot's not flat, it's not level with the road. So when you, you know, if you go up two more feet, I don't know that a six-foot fence is going to look any different than a four-foot fence, and the fence is far enough back from the actual front of the house that there's no impediment if somebody's looking to make a left or right turn off that road. So from a safety standpoint, I didn't see any issue from a uniqueness, you know, you add the elevation and I don't know, I don't, I don't know that we need to go any deeper into the uniqueness clause, I think that fits it, you know?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this?
So, you haven't made a motion yet, so...
I haven't made a motion yet, why am I doing this?
Why don't I write in the one, so I left that one section blank in the approval one, so you want to say the slope and topography of that southwest section of lawn?
Is not level with the road.
Is above the road, okay.
Yep. All right. It's not a level lot. Because that would be a problem, if we'd have a level, if you'd have a level lot and have that, you know, there's so many of these corner lots that, you know, they would like that, and we would have six-foot fences all over the place if we had that, that's what, we have to do this, and we have to make sure we're covering our bases.
I understand.
Yes. Okay, while you're doing that, I can...
So I'm going to write that the topography and the lot is not level to the right-of-way. The slope does not provide sufficient privacy?
Privacy with the four-foot fence, so she wants a six.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I'll read the recommendation then. Recommendation, resolution, okay, resolution 2020-36, a resolution, I'm going to say approving or denying, and whoever, whoever makes the motion can do whatever they want. A variance request for a six-foot fence within the front yard setback. I need a motion one way or the other.
This is Jamie. I'll make a motion to approve.
Jamie makes a motion to approve. I need a second.
I'll, I'll second it. This is Gary.
Gary seconds it. Any discussion on this? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes, based on the uniqueness, yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll say yes too. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, number nine is gone.
Could I give you a little update on that just for a while?
Yes, go ahead.
So the baseball park is removed from this. On Friday, we were unaware of when the state was going to allow people to start baseball up again, and then they came out over the weekend with standards saying baseball can start tomorrow. So if there's anything in the safety plan, the COVID plan, preparedness plan, if there's something missing that you think should be on there, let me know, otherwise, I think we did a really good job with the baseball team, and I think they're ready to start playing some baseball, and looking forward to it.
Go ahead.
Yay.
Can we notify the construction crew that there's going to be baseball up there, so to take whatever precautions they need to take, that there's going to be more people than normal?
More traffic, you know?
Yeah, we can do that.
Oh, sorry, you couldn't hear me?
Right.
Okay. So I was just asking Brian to communicate with the construction crew up there that there's going to be more than normal people up there, more than normal traffic.
Will do.
All right, excellent, thanks.
Thanks, Brian. That's it with that?
Yep.
Then we'll move on to number 10, discussion on planning Alexander Park performance, stage scheduling, and use criteria.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll get nice and close to the mic so I can hear you on...
Use the mic?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks for letting me come to this meeting, and I, the first thing I want to do is thank Brian and his Stan Tech. The bills they've been sending us was, is more than appreciated. You know, it's far under than what they, what we suspected, you know? And I know I probably been hard on Stan Tech, but my goal is to keep, you know, keep the cost down, but you went way over beyond it, and thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
I appreciate it quite a bit.
Bridget, you have to talk into the mic, we can't hear you.
I'm super close.
There you go. Okay. I'm back. I was just thanking Brian for the bills that Stan Tech been sending us. They really are reasonable, and, and I think that they are, are keeping us in mind and not charging us what they should, probably should be charging us, so I want to thank him for doing that. Okay, so then, as we're building the park, I think one of the, the things that the council was asking us to do was to come up with some type of agreement, how to run the park. It isn't something that the city wants to run, you know, so it was, it's the last chapter in our, in our park, so we've been, with all the stuff going on, we couldn't meet with different groups to talk about it, so Kim and I have been talking about it quite a bit at work, and Brad Newgarb, that works for us, he helped set up the same agreement that the city has with the ballpark and how the ballpark's run, so we listened to him to get some ideas how we should set this up. And what we'd like to do is get a committee of about six people that would run the park. And we would break the park up in really two sections, small, small parties and big parties. And I'm talking about using the stage now. The splash pad playground is open all the time for whoever wants to come. But there's going to, we want to, we want to use the stage, so we want to plan activities on a stage, and who's going to plan it. So what we're asking is that we get a committee of about six people, and it run it for about two years, to get an idea of how much money could be made at a concert, and how it should be set up. We were talking with a couple of people on the fire department that set up Fire Fest. They're going to be working with us, so we don't have to invent the wheel again. So I guess what we're asking for is permission for us to go forward with our idea, and, and let us come up with something and come back and present it. And that would be rules. Now Bridget was going to check on different rules that Wade Park has for a splash pad, and what different cities have for a splash pad, so we can get some ideas, and we use the rules that the city comes up with. We're just trying to set up an organization that's going to run the stage area. Now, we're thinking about, in our conversations, we're thinking having two to three to four concerts a year, and not any more than, than that, you know, because every, you can overdo it. St. Cloud has it every week, Richmond has it every week, and we want to, you know, we just want to get some good bands a couple of times a year. But then there'll be other people that want to use the stage, you know, probably the, the library wants to do Storytime, or the chamber wants to do Santa Claus, you know, somebody has to help set that up. So that's what we're, we're trying, trying to get going, you know? And the other thing is, we'd be asking to get a liquor license to sell beer. And what we are thinking is that the organization that we're setting up would do all the sale of the beer, that if somebody, if there was a band coming in, that organization would run it. And like I said at the last meeting, the money that would be made would be to offset any debt that we would have in the park when it's done. So far, we're, we're doing great, but you know, it's, it's not there yet, so we want to make sure that we're in the black. But if we were in the red, the first, every concert we had, or any event that was there that brought in money, would be given to pay off the splash pad, okay? And then after that, the money that was there, we'd use for, put in a kitty, and we'd use it for plan two. Like, we still would like to change the railing on the bridge, and we still would like to do the east side of the river. So, and once that was accomplished, then if there was money left, we would use it for a grant for parks. If the park, some park in Rockdale needed a new slide or something, we'd have money available to help pay for that. We're hoping we don't have to use it for maintenance, like cutting the grass, or planting grass, or any of that, it'd be any type of equipment that needed to be bought. No, that's the line we're thinking of, you know, as we get together, we meet, somebody comes with an idea, we kind of get off track and, you know, head another direction. But we're asking for permission to go forward with this, and come back with the council with the plan, that you people can either, you know, you can change anything on it you want. And then once it's running, you know, we threw up ideas like, why don't we do like Third Street does? If we have a band calling organization, say, hey, if you sell the beer and you run the food stands, we'll give you a half the profit, you know, to try to spread it out. But we need to run it for at least one year, and probably two years, before we know really how it's going to work. We have no idea if you have free admission, how many people you're going to get, and how much money you're going to make. Everything's free, the only thing that'd be a cost for would be the beer, pop, water, and some food. So that's, that's where we're sitting right now. So that's the last part of the, of the splash pad.
Come on, mind if I add a little from our meeting?
Please do, please.
We were talking about having it, starting with the park board, maybe once the committee started, hopefully have a group of people and have the park board help draft the rules and the procedures on how to request it, and we had talked about having it be nonprofit, like for-profit companies, we were discussing not renting it out for their own private use, but it should be for community use, and nonprofits could benefit the way Tom was talking about being the team. So we had talked about, maybe the July park board meeting, having some of that discussion as well, to help solidify all the rules and everything.
Yeah, we'd definitely bring up what we have, and it is getting tossed around. Our first idea was just have it for nonprofit organizations, but we can see we might be running into some snags, so we might say, you know, we're saying, well, what's the difference if somebody else wants to rent it? They can only rent, you know, the park is really, you got the playground, equipment. They can only rent, you know, the park is really, you got the playground, equipment, splash pad, bathrooms, and then you have the stage. Well, you know, what would be the difference if they want to rent it? We don't know, we're just, you know, trying to throw that out for discussion. If somebody did rent it, you know, we would rent it to them, with certain guidelines.
And the, yeah, the park board is, we should be a part of that discussion on what those guidelines are.
You know, the park board should be, should be on this, and probably even one member on the park board on this committee, you know, would be fine too. But we're looking for six people that have a lot of energy, that are willing to spend a lot of time on it. So, any questions?
I think that's just an update, so I don't think you need to...
Has anybody got anything for Tom? Questions? Comments?
Well, this is Gary. Just to clarify, I am a member of the Alexander Park Construction Committee, just to provide that transparency. But aside of that, Tom, I think you've got a great plan, and I like the idea of six people, and not 12, or 14, or 16. Like, you and I have talked about, you can get a lot more done with a fewer people, and I, I just hope you go ahead and make this happen. Sounds like a great plan.
I think so too.
I agree.
Yep. Move forward.
Good, good. And liquor license, everybody be, what we're looking for is just a beer license.
Beer license.
We're not looking for hard liquor, we're looking for a beer license. And our committee would go talk to each one of the bars, and just let them know what we're doing. We don't want to get the buyers mad at us because we're selling liquor. But our events would, we're saying, are over at 10 o'clock. It isn't something that would run late into night, you know? 10 o'clock from, you know, 6 to 10 or something. You know, so it'd be their job to get the people from there into their bar after that. And I, you know, we keep talking around, it's leading like we do during the week, and not on weekends. So, you know, it's, we wouldn't be taking people away from the bars on the weekends. We'd bring people in town during the week when they're not as busy. So, that's where we're at. The fireman statues are coming in, will be in, hopefully by the 1st of July, we're hoping. We hope that some today, they're getting, they're almost done, or they're getting close to being done, so...
Playground equipment?
Playground equipment will be going in. We're back with the people we bought it from, to see if they can install it. You know, there's, you know, you look at the prints, it's like, holy cow, there's 90-some posts that got to get cemented in the ground. And they have to connect to the playground, you know? So it's, what, the way it works is you drill a hole, and you set the post in. You don't cement it yet. So then you drill the other one, and you, you put it together so you have places to move. But you can see, once you have 90-some posts, one isn't going to fit, or three of them aren't going to fit, you know? So it's, we're hoping that, we had some people lined up to do it, we're hoping that would work, but we're looking at it, we agree with them. It's, and they really got busy, you know? So we're dealing with the company to see if, if they would would set up the equipment. So...
All right.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's all I have. Anybody have any more questions? Good, we're still planning on opening it in, if we can. You know, we'll be back to set up a date, but sometime early August, we're hoping. We will sod, we're planning on sodding everything around the playground equipment.
Okay.
Okay, and then the other half will be seated. But we'll open a part of the splash pad.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thanks a lot, Tom.
Thank you, appreciate it. Right, then we'll go on to number 11. Published Works Director Report. John Stevie.
Do you have anything? Stevie? Whoa. So both things I have on my report tonight are kind of unplanned, unbudgeted situations that happened. Eighth Avenue South, just south of the ballpark, the road took a beating over the winter time with the frost. We measured it up, it's about 120 feet of road, it's almost, looks like pure gravel, but it's all, you know, crushed up tar. So we got estimates to do that, and we're going to reshape it so the water flows decent, redo the curbs. It's kind of some makeshift curbs on it right now. And then do some brush cutting on the backside so the water can flow decent, and just kind of reconstruct that back piece of the road. So the price on that's $26,845 through Kramer Trucking and Excavating. So if you want to go ahead and read that recommendation, Dave?
I will do that. Recommendation: To approve and award to Kramer Trucking and Excavation the bid for the reconstruction of Eighth Avenue South at the cost of $26,845. And furthermore, to be paid out as Streets Department Street Repair and Upkeep Line Item 6611. I need a motion on that.
This is Gary, I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
This is Jamie, I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Jamie already seconded it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, John, you got it.
All right, the next thing I have is the last section of pipe of the storm sewer that runs through Alexander Park along the Rockory Trail, and discharges into the Sauk River. We replaced a bunch of the pipe along the trail through the splash pad throughout this summer, or last, was it last summer? This spring, last fall. The last probably 80 to 120 feet is crushed. The pipe is separating, it's full of, we can't even get a genner through it, we can't get a camera through it. With the splash pad building their staircase, we stopped that construction for now. The estimate we got included quite a bit of time on replacing rock and granite in that spot. We met with the splash pad over there. We discussed maybe a new plan on a staircase going down, something a little more uniform. Probably going to be easier to install, actually, moving forward. So we're hoping the cost kind of offset from the difficulty before to an easier installation now. But Tom and I will talk about that when we get that far. So we're looking to replace that storm sewer. The last rainfall we had, there was water actually standing in the pipe back further, because it wouldn't even, it wouldn't even allow the water to go through fast enough. So it definitely needs to be replaced, and now is the time to do it before we get carried away with that staircase and the grass comes in and everything else. So we got an estimate from Kramer to do that. He can get to it on Friday if approved tonight, and then the staircase guy can come back and move forward.
All right. Recommendation, recommendation to approve and award to Kramer Trucking and Excavation the bid to replace a collapsed storm sewer pipe at Alexander Park at a cost of $22,450. And furthermore, to be paid out of the storm sewer department's repair line item 6615. I need a motion.
This is Doug, I'll make a motion.
Doug makes a motion. How about a second?
This is Jamie, I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on this? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion carries. Anything else, John?
The only thing I have is some updates. We're just chugging along on the water treatment plant, getting real close to the completed design. And once we get that, get that done, we'll bring that print to council to show you guys the plan, the design, the look, things like that. If you have comments, I'm sure we'll have a comment section where some things need, you know, tweaking as far as the looks wise on it. Wells 8 and 9, moving forward, they're talking controls right now. And then pre-treatment process, working with the brewery on that. Hopefully getting some things dialed in, to where we can start, you know, designing the pre-treatment plant as well. So that's about all I got for the evening.
All right.
Any questions for me?
Nobody got anything? Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 12, City Engineer Report. Ryan Litchett.
Mr. Mayor and Council.
In person?
In person? Is that live? Cutter 158, update. We have things you can't see as well. The utilities, we're done with everything to about 7. Moving a little probably closer to 8 by now. Pushing the, so that'd be the storm, sanitary, water services, everything. Sanitary, we're pushing closer to 12, and it's probably a little bit further as well. So continuing to just knock out utilities as we go. With that, they're working from east to west. They started putting in the Seating Curb from Red River to 6. So we got two blocks of curb in already, they're starting to grade for the sidewalks. We're subcutting the block from 6 to 7. Somehow just in, almost exactly in one block, we ran into bad material on the whole block. So taking, taking some of that out, putting down fabric sand just to build a better roadway. Couldn't get it to the subgrade to pass. So we tried, they farmed it a lot, and finally we gave up and said, let's put some sand in. So west of there, it gets a little bit better. There might be some spots that are bad again, but take them as they come. Otherwise, on the county portion, really, you know, going over 14th over the hill, they're working on subgrading that. I think if we don't have gravel on, some of it are ready, we'll be getting gravel on it soon. All that storm sewer to the west of 14th is already in as well.
Okay.
So pretty soon getting gravel on there, and starting the road building process out there as well. Yeah, moving good. We're, it's, it's nice to get a start on curb and roadwork this early already.
Yeah.
Most of the time, it's August before you start seeing curb, so it's good to have it already. Also, just wanted to thank the residents on the roadway for their patience. I know it's been a long summer so far for them, and we appreciate their patience. We apologize for the occasional times that the water gets shut off because they hit a line, or things happen, so we apologize for that, but appreciate their patience. Moving down the list, John kind of covered water treatment plant, and chugging along on final design. Wells 8 and 9, the pumps and controls. I had included in the packet our plans for the pumps, the controls, and the roadway, going back to the, going back to the actual wells up on the plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. Otherwise, what we're looking at is if you approve, getting the advertisement to the record this week so that it would advertise next Tuesday, a week from today. Bidding on July 10th, which satisfies by state law how long we need to bid. That means we can come to the July 14 council meeting to approve the bids, get us going on a lot of this. One of the longer lead times is the control items, so we'd be able to get moving on ordering some of those.
Okay.
I would also be coming back if I can get it done by the next council meeting. So the way we're bringing power to the site is overhead. So we have to bring power in at full line voltage, which is 13,800. We have to do that because of the voltage losses in the long distance. If we brought it down to the 400, 480, we'd lose too much voltage over that distance. So we're working on that design right now by going overhead. When we looked at it originally, it's a lot cheaper to go overhead than to bury it, and if anything happens to it, maintenance is a lot easier. Underground, you run the risk in the middle of winter a line breaks, and now you have to try and find it in the frozen ground. So we'd be coming back with that to go under a separate bid, but this would allow the controls to get going, the pump to get going. They could start building the roadway already. There's also still some piping that has to happen from where we ended the last project to actually get it to the wells.
I'll read that recommendation then. To approve the plan, plans and authorize advertising for bids for the Wells 8 and 9 pumps, controls, and roadway construction. I need a motion on that.
This is Jamie, I'll make a motion to approve.
Jamie, second it? Doug seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you. I was also going to mention quick, we are working with Excel too. They have to bring in a service into, one pole basically into our property to put their metering. Now, they call it primary metering. So they bring in their equipment in order to allow us to hook up to it. So we're working with Excel as well on that.
Okay.
The sanitary lift station water main project, still working with, on the route, working with landowners. So when we have a little more information on that, we'll be able to update you, but just working on nailing down that route, and working with property owners right now.
All right.
And then John hit the industrial pre-treatment in that conceptual design phase, getting, getting cranked up on, on the design of the facility. Working with the brewery closely on, on their numbers as well.
All right.
And that's all I had, unless there were any questions.
Anybody got anything for Brian?
None for me.
Did you not?
No.
No, no, no? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
We'll move on to number 13, Police Department Report. Chief Blue.
All right, just some updates for me for May. For Cold Spring, we had 242 total incidents, 17 medical emergencies, 18 suspicious activities, 78 traffic stops with 26 citations, and then 129 miscellaneous calls for service. In Richmond, we had 80 total incidents, six medicals, six suspicious activities, 15 traffic stops with five citations, and 53 miscellaneous calls for service. Hopefully, the numbers are trending back, that we're going back to normal slowly but surely, and hopefully it keeps going that way. One of the other things is, on June 11th, we had a number of thefts around town from people's yards. A number of them were just signs in their front yard. If anybody, it was anywhere from 10:00 PM until roughly sunrise on June 11th. If anybody has the doorbell cameras, security cameras on their house, anything like that, with any information, please contact our office. And we also, just a reminder, we've got 2015 Chevy Impala and a 2011 Can-Am that are currently for sale by silent bid. They're parked down by maintenance, by Riverport Equipment kind of down in that area, if people want to look at them. But if sealed bids need to be dropped off or mailed to City Hall.
By when? Do you know? How often?
I don't know if we're establishing them.
No, we haven't, roughly a month, but I will start advertising an end date.
Okay, okay. Just curious.
Yep.
All right.
And that's all I have, unless anybody has questions for me.
Anybody got anything for Jason? No?
No.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Number 14, City Administrator Report.
So the school district did vote on that SRO contract extension yesterday, so it's the same, it just changed the dates from 2019 through 2020, and now it'll be for 2020 through 2021. Same terms and everything. So I just need a motion to approve entering into that contract.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into SRO contract with the school district.
Jamie makes a motion.
Listen. This is Gary, I'll second it.
Gary seconds it. Any discussion on this? Otherwise, Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion carries.
Uh, next, the fire hall. The, at the last meeting, you had discussed going back to setting up. I think I'm, I'm wondering if special meeting sometime in the weeks, the week of July 13th through 17th, or the 20th through the 24th would work? Probably a afternoon, like a 1:30, or 1 o'clock, 2:30, and 4 o'clock. Interview the three candidates, candidate firms, and then hopefully on the 28th, pick which firm. So I was wondering if there's any dates. The 13th and 14th is a EDA and City Council, and the 22nd is planning. So I don't know if you want to do it the afternoon before planning or you want to do it maybe the fifteenth, sixteenth, twenty-third, twenty-first. What are people's calendars like in those two weeks?
I believe I'm gone the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Okay, so those are out. Anybody else have any dates that they cannot make?
What were the dates you're looking at again, Bridgette?
Probably the fifteenth, sixteenth and now twenty-first. Cause I know Jason can't be here on the twentieth.
Is Dan on?
Dan, are you on here? I know trying to call in has been a hit or miss for him on his computers.
I could do it the sixteenth after twelve PM.
Does the sixteenth work for everybody?
Sixteenth works for me. Works for me.
I can make it work.
The sixteenth?
Okay. All right, then I'll let, start at the sixteenth and we'll give them each, we'll do an hour and a half so we can interview and then have some. Do you want to start? So we start at one, we probably do one at one, two thirty and four.
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
Okay, and then I'll call the candidates and get them set up and put together. We'll call some other people that have done it and get some of their interview questions and get them out to everybody. All right.
So just on, we're saying the fifteenth, right? Is that what you said, right?
Sixteen. One six, sixteen.
One six, okay.
Thursday.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Any more on that?
No.
You all got Rockville's response to the letter and I think that's an appropriate response. I think it also helped, our letter helps move their negotiations along. So that's, that's good. And so I think that thirty days is more than reasonable because I think they'll have something in writing by then or very close to being in writing. They have moved quite a bit.
Bridgette?
Yeah.
I guess I'm not real fond of the thirty day.
Sure.
Only because, I mean, we've been dealing with this issue for better part of a year now. And you sent that letter a long ago and now they come back, we come back and they want a thirty day extension. Personally, I don't know if we should give them any extension. I mean, they've had issues with it, they knew it, they drank in their feet. And I personally think if we give them ten days, either have it done or haul it off like they were doing. Why did they stop hauling it away?
That's a good question. So yeah, I'm fine with that. Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think the, the letter helped move the arbitration that they're in along. And so I think the ten days might make it even better. So I'm fine with that. Either way, that letter was from the lawyer that's, it does say Marty, but it was, Marty worked with the league lawyer that is helping them on their case with the, with their resident. So I don't know if thirty days is necessary, so we could respond with ten. I think that might get it on eight quicker too.
That's just my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but.
Do we need a?
This is Gary, I agree with Doug. This has been going on for a long, long time.
Yes.
Yes, yes it has.
Do we need a motion to change that? Or?
Sure, or just give me direction to respond saying that they have ten days.
They have ten days.
I agree.
Okay.
Good direction.
All right.
Here we go. We're done.
I will re-sentence, re-sign with a ten days from.
Is that okay? Doug, Gary?
Sounds good to me.
All righty.
Yes, Gary, here, that's good.
All right.
All right, I'll give them till July third.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Next is electrical services. So our, electrical inspector is retiring and I had worked with him on a person who he had recommended and I've done some interviews with or some calls about. And he's a really good inspector, but he's a state inspector and he wasn't, and he was planning to come and ask to be both a state and a municipal. But he isn't sure that he could do both because of some of the requirements of having his own corporation and insurance and all that. I did do a review with Lois. We take in, in two thousand seventeen, our largest take-in for electrical permits was thirty-five hundred dollars or just under thirty-five hundred dollars. If we give, if we want to go back to the state, this person would be our inspector because he's the Sturms County Inspector. And I called some of our local electricians and say he's, he's, he's great, he's on the ball. We know he's here Tuesdays and Thursdays, so you never have to worry about when he's going to come and do your inspection. You can line everything up. And they can do it all through the state. They can file their permits, it's all electronic and they're done. And I know, I was looking back why we went to a little municipal. And it was because in two thousand ten, the state had that long shutdown and we had projects that needed to be done. So we passed an ordinance and then went to it. However, after looking at how much we've actually taken in and how much time Lois and Chris and I have to spend on processing permits because we don't have an electronic permit and we don't really know much about electronic permits. So people will call and ask us and we'll send them to the inspector anyhow. It seems like we're ready to rescind that ordinance and go back to state services. I emailed you the, what the services are, they do exactly what we do. But we have to rescind the ordinance and no longer have municipal inspection. And finding someone willing to do it has been a challenge.
The municipal?
The municipal, having to contact with us. So even Darryl was a state electrical inspector. He's licensed through the state, he could have been a state licensed inspector. And he was doing municipal. And there's only a couple other people that I know in the region that are. And the closest person would have to drive about an hour round trip to come to Cold Spring to do some inspections. Whereas the state inspector is here in Cold Spring, or here in Sturms County every day. So Darryl has said, so on Friday, we thought everything was ready and we were going to bring him here and have him be the municipal inspector. But then all of a sudden, some of the requirements from the position dawned on him, I think, a little more than he was prepared to do. And so that's what we were doing our research. And our existing inspector would have to complete all the existing permits anyhow. And he also said he'd help us till we make a decision. At the July fourteenth, that ordinance could be rescinded and then we could start with state services probably that. I don't know, prob, I would think if you approve the, rescind the ordinance and approve the agreement, it would start the next thing for any new permits.
Bridgette?
Yeah.
So we, we send the ordinance and we go with the state and then they shut down or decide they want to take some time off. Can we go back to municipal one or are we locked into a one-year contract with them or whatever? The only thing is if we have, not that we get stuck here and cannot get permits looked at.
No, it'd be just like last time. It would, we, under statute, we could re, we could reenact the municipal one. Because, you know, I think, I think some of those state employees would be like, oh, maybe I'll go be a municipal. Cause they wouldn't be getting paid, they wouldn't be able to do their job. So, and I, I didn't have time to check, but there was a shutdown after the two thousand twelve, ten. And I don't know if those inspectors were considered essential and left open.
Okay. Sounds good, thanks.
Yep.
So do you need, you don't need anything written?
So, well, I guess I need direction. Are you okay with me advertising or putting on the, drafting an ordinance, rescinding our municipal and then prepping to get the state on board?
I'm okay with it. I am, I am okay with it too.
I also am, okay.
This is Doug, I'm okay.
Okay.
This is Gary, I'm okay.
Okay.
All right. And then my last item is new. We have about seven property owners who are over three periods late on their utilities. So it wasn't just the COVID period, it's the November to December, January to February and the March to April. And some of them, we couldn't do anything with during the no shut-off period in Minnesota. So I'm wondering if you, we have one of two ways we could handle it. We could shut them off and see what happens if they get their payment in, that might help them. But I don't know if during this time of COVID, if we want to wait and certify it in November. We can do that to the property owners. One of them is a rental, the rest are owned by the utility bill, the person whose name is on the utility bill. So I could do either, I just, I wanted to bring that to your attention to see how you felt in this strange time we're living.
You said six, six.
Bridgette, this is Gary. Have any of them contacted you to explain why they have not paid their bill?
No.
Well, then I would think we should shut them off. If I were in that predicament and I didn't have the money or I was struggling, I would certainly contact creditors and explain my situation. But if none of them have taken that step, then apparently they just don't really care.
Yeah, that's a good point. Have we sent them a notice?
Yeah, we sent a notice of past due. And sometimes some of them have, I'm not sure, I don't believe any of these have it. But in some other times, we have gone to go shut someone off and the minute they knew the shut-off was coming, they'd come in.
Do we send them a notice of shut-off?
Yeah.
You will be shut off on this date? On this date, if you do not pay your bill by this time.
We usually send a shut-off notice and not normally a past due, but because of COVID, I wanted to give people some time. Contact me like you said, Gary. And so I think the shut-off.
So how long do we usually allow on the shut-off notice? I mean.
Ten days?
Oh, that's fair.
Ten, ten days to two. Then a, a new billing period is coming shortly.
Yeah, I would, I would move forward with the shut-off notices.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Doug.
I, I think what we need to do is I think we should send that shut-off notice with the ten-day notice and a note or a letter in there stating, contact City Hall if you have any unforeseen circumstances. Cause I mean, with the COVID stuff, all of a sudden, these people now have lost jobs that they're not working. And we go and shut them off and they do have a hardship. So let's give them that benefit of the doubt that they need to get back us with, or Bridgette, with an explanation why they're not. And if they don't have a good explanation or they're not out of work, no apartment place is not out of work. Well, those should be shut off then.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point.
And are you authorizing then that if they come in and talk to me that, we don't normally have the, a payment plan? That I, I could do some sort of payment structure with them to make sure they get back caught up if it's going to take them a little longer?
If there is in fact a hardship, yeah.
If there's a hardship?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then that's what we will do.
All right.
And that is all I have.
That's it?
Yep.
All right. Then we'll go on to number fifteen, list of bills and additions. Recommendation to review and accept payment of the accounts payable according to the list and supplemental list presented by city staff. I need a motion on that.
This is Doug, I'll make that motion.
Doug makes a motion, how about a second?
Shannon will second.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion carries. Number sixteen, general questions and comments from city council. Shannon?
Flowers look great, everything looks great. Phone around town, Alexander Park, looks like it's coming together wonderfully. So I'm just really happy about the way things are coming together. So looks good.
Yes, does. Jamie?
The only thing I want to say is, I want to say thank you to our police department and the chief for the wonderful job that you guys do. I don't get any complaints from you, from anybody about what you guys do, so I appreciate the services you provide to our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Doug?
I have nothing.
All right, Gary?
I just want to take a, a second to compliment, and I hope I pronounce his last name correctly, Joe Velazquez, our postmaster.
Yes.
I was in the post office the other day and waiting in line and he was helping some people. And I, I'll tell you, that guy is so professional and polite and good at his job. I just felt really good about being in there. So Joe, if you're listening or you're watching, thank you for doing the job you do and being so professional, so polite and accommodating. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Gary. I have nothing. Number seventeen, next scheduled city council meeting, July fourteenth, twenty twenty. Motion to adjourn. I need a motion.
This is Gary, I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
This is Jamie, I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion, otherwise Shannon?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion carries, thank you very much.